Formidable. That's the main thing. They are formidable. Good morning.
Good morning.
The Tuesday, July 6, 2021, regular Board of County Commissioners meeting will now come to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection for the first responders and members of the armed forces, followed by an invocation by Pastor Chris Strinian of Grace Baptist Church of Vero Beach. And Vice Chairman Peter D. O'Brien will do the honors of delivering the pledge. Please rise.
Our Father and our God, as we bow before you this day, we thank you for another day that you've given us to live and to love and to reflect upon all that you have done for us. We thank you that you have given us those who represent us and service and government, and we pray for them this day, Lord, that as they go about the business of the people, that you will help them to have guidance and wisdom and discernment to do that which is right for the people. And, Lord, that you would just lead and guide them in every decision that is made. Father, we thank you for our nation and for the independence that you have given us, the freedom that we have enjoyed. And as we have celebrated this past weekend, Lord, we ask that you would help us as a nation to heal, to draw close to one another and to exalt you in our daily lives. We pray this day for our first responders and for those in the military and ask that you would watch over and protect them, Father, as they deal with some very difficult situations. And, Lord, we even think of our 911 operators and all that they go through as they deal with some very hostile times. And we pray, Lord, that you would just give them wisdom and guidance as they deal with these things. And, Father, we just pray your blessings upon this time together. We pray that everything will be done in unity. And, Lord, that we will see great things accomplished in our county and for our county and for the people. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Please, the army, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. At this time, there is a deletion or a referral for delay for item 5A, which is the presentation by Andrea Berry for Healthy Star Coalition. And Commissioners, are there any other additions, emergency items, deletions, concerns?
Move to approve agenda as amended.
Vice Chairman O'Brien, seconded by Commissioner Airman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. On informational items, we did have a retirement, a proclamation honoring Lawrence J. Hanch on his retirement from Indian River County Board of County Commissioners, Sandwich Golf Club, for over 18 years of service. While we did present him with a plaque, he chose to receive that at his residence. I will say that he will be sorely missed, his ubiquitous smile and just overall friendliness and ray of sunshine at the golf course. Will be sorely missed, and we wish him the best on his retirement. Is there anything else on the informational items?
Mr. Chairman, I just pointed out that we do have the distinguished budget award. Again, I didn't know if the clerk was going to be here to brag about that a little bit, but I think this is like a record year in a row of the clerk's office receiving this. And just to give a shout out, Jeff Smith, our clerk, who does a fantastic job with our budget and everything. So, very proud of that.
And minor point, the clerk does do a great job, and they get the award for the for the
This is our
This is the budget.
This is Kristen. Okay, Kristen, there you are. Okay.
Kristen's coming down.
That's the presentation we're looking for. My apologies.
I was hoping somebody was going to say something, but I guess we gave Jeff credit. He did get something a few weeks back. So, it's good. He got recognized.
This is for the budget award. And I would like to say that we were just notified we are a triple crown winner.
Yay.
All right.
Because we got all three GFOA awards between finance and budget.
So, who, you have to wear the crown, then?
You could wear the crown.
No, no.
You do all the work.
I think you should wear it during the budget workshop.
It's shared between budget and finance, but yes, today is for the budget award for our 30th year in a row.
I'm just grateful that you're not making a request for Rich to expand the wall because there is so much on your wall. And we are very fortunate to have had the team in the past. Thank you, County Administrator, for your past efforts and your current efforts and everybody in between. We're very blessed, and the people of Indian River County are very blessed, that the books are just right.
It's a great document, and it's online if anyone would like to read it. Rather lengthy, but.
Well, I'm still getting over the PAFR, and the PAFR was light reading, the CAFR, and then now we have your book. And I guess next week
All three of those make the triple crown, so.
And Thursday, we're going to see another book.
Yeah, Friday.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kristen.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kristen. Good job.
Good job. Thank you all. And congratulations. And we now move on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, is there anything you wish to have pulled for further discussion, debate? Seeing none? Is there anyone in the audience that would like anything pulled for clarification or further discussion? Seeing none? And no one's on the internet?
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to move the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Upon motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. There are no constitutional officers items. We'll now move on to departmental matters and community development. It's a request for authorization to abate a public nuisance located at 1262 15th Avenue. Good morning, Mr. Savicek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy Savcek, Chief of Code Enforcement and Environmental Planning. The item I have before you today is a public nuisance abatement for a property located at 1262 15th Avenue. This is a residential property located in a residential neighborhood. It is on 15th Avenue, just north of 12th Street. And to give you a little bit of history on the subject property, back in March of 2020, county code enforcement staff received a complaint regarding an accumulation of junk trash debris and also vehicle storage at the property. And, you know, we did have good contact with the property owner, and through our correspondence with him, we did grant him some additional time to try and clean up the property. He did indicate to us on several occasions that he was kind of just on the cusp of cleaning it up, but that never quite materialized. And so, in November of 2020, the code enforcement board imposed $100 per day fine against the property for failure to resolve the violations. And through this time, since we initially made contact with the property owner, the condition of the property continued to decline. There was more items brought on site, more vehicles, more trailers, more, just items in general being stored. And after that, on May 24 of 2021, the code enforcement board entered an order determining nuisance warranting county abatement. And that's something that we use sparingly. I think in the last 20 years, we've done maybe two or three of these. But when a code violation represents a serious threat to public health or safety, this is a step the code enforcement board can take to kind of escalate it beyond just the fines when the fines are not having an impact. And this starts a process by which ultimately we can go into the property and clean it up, try to resolve some of the issues that are there. If you want to go to the next. And so, these are some pictures of the property. I took these last week. And this is, I'm situated south of the property, looking north into the entrance of the property. Behind some of the debris and stuff, you see there is the house, but it's getting to the point where you can't even see the house anymore, and you really can't see anything other than the items being stored. Again, the photo on the left is just a same shot looking to the north. And then the photo on the right there, 15th Avenue also dead ends into the rear of the property. And so, this is a shot looking south, from the backyard. If you're looking into the backyard, that's the view you see there. So, even the entirety of the property is essentially full of items at this point. And as I stated, you know, there is this additional step the code enforcement board can do where they determine a property is a public nuisance warranting abatement. And that starts a process by which, the first step is the board makes the determination. The next step is the Board of County Commissioners can authorize staff to essentially go into the property and clean it up. And how we do that is, we would get approval through the court to enter the property. In a case like this, we would typically hire a contractor to go in, do the work, clean it up. And then the cost of that work would be filed as a lien against the property. So, similar to the fine that's already running against the property, this would just be an additional fine, so that at some point, hopefully in the future, we could recoup the cost of whatever it costs to have that property cleaned up. And so, there's essentially two alternatives for the board to consider regarding this issue. Alternative one would be to take no action. Under this alternative, the fine would continue to run. The fine currently sits at $22,700. And again, every single day that goes by is another $100. And this alternative wouldn't immediately address the issues that are there, although it wouldn't require any additional work or any additional cost on our behalf. Alternative two would be to, for the board to direct staff to seek that court order to enter the property and resolve the violations by actually pulling the debris and items out. While this would address the potential hazards, it would result in a cost to the county for the cleanup. And as I mentioned, the cost would be then recorded as a lien against the property. Happy to answer any questions.
The property, is the property owner here?
I don't see him, although he has been to all the code board hearings for the case as it's escalated through. So, he has been, and he's been in regular contact with us as well.
And we've had no effort for a response?
No. He's, he still tells us he's going to clean it up. He just needs to do one more thing, and then he's going to do it. But it just, even within the last week, we've seen items coming on site instead of going offsite.
But we're gaining, gaining
We're gaining stuff still now. And as you can imagine, the neighbors are quite upset about watching this kind of happen. So, we've definitely heard a lot from them.
And I guess some of the neighbors might be here? Well, I feel for them. I'm looking at those pictures. And I'm sure you have pictures of this as it progressed. And we have the county attorney here, and I believe an attorney that is probably handling or will be handling the matter if it goes forward in that direction. I see her coming down. I had a question. How long does this process take if that is decided by this board today?
We had to give them 30 days before we could come here to even ask. So, it's been 30 days since he was, you know, it was ordered a nuisance in front of the code enforcement board. At this point in time, it's just a matter of getting, you know, filing the paperwork with the court and seeing at what point in time the court will give us a hearing date. So, I roughly, and I apologize, Commissioner, I'm not aware of how long that might take right now, because I think
So, can
I'm not in person.
Customarily
So, I will note, the last time that this was done, I believe it was back in 2009. And I was able to research the court history. It actually happened pretty quickly. The only issue I have now is, again, with the backlog of court cases and hearings and the like, I don't think it's going to be as quickly, but I think it's the type of thing we're hoping to get in front of the court within the next 30 days to have that hearing.
Okay. And then the cost factor is placed upon a lien?
Yes. What we can do then is whatever costs we have will then be put as a lien on that property.
Do we know what the estimated cost is?
I think that I mean, we have a very basic estimate of $10,000 for the cleanup. Of course, that's subject to, we haven't actually been in the property. We've only looked at it from the outside. So, we're not quite sure what's all in there, but that would be our estimate.
Thank you.
Yeah. Andy, do you know, is this their homesteaded residence?
This is their homesteaded residence, yes.
Okay.
They do own two properties, one on the adjacent street, that's a rental, but this is actually their primary residence.
Okay. And most of this junk is all in their primary homesteaded residence? Okay. In the staff report, it mentions, Dylan, that your office is going to look at somehow how to, once we clean it up, some action to prevent them from piling materials back in there is that?
Yeah. And so, what's contemplated and what we've done in the past is had a mandatory injunction. And so, the court would allow us to go on, we'd clean up the property, and then we'd have a further court order that no further such actions could take place. And the threat there for us, which is really powerful, is that if they do anything in violation, they'll be in violation of the court order, not just our own code, which is a nice stick to kind of have.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have seen this. I have seen this property and talked to members, deputies that have gone on complaints with this property. I think it's a good thing. I mean, I'll support, I'm support alternative number, or option number two. And the other thing that I like to see is that we're taking some strong action on an issue like this. I think we probably, you know, we try to give everybody the benefit of the doubt. And you and I seem to be on code enforcement once a week or something. I'm sure fellow commissioners can say the same thing. But I'm glad to see we're taking strong action. And personally, I think we need to consider stronger action on a lot of these code enforcements a little bit sooner, sooner than, you know, than $22,700 worth of lanes on it. But I'm glad to see this. I totally support alternative number two. And I think we should move ahead. And I think at this point, for the neighbors and for the county and for the safety, the health, the cost is kind of irrelevant. And hopefully, we can get it back, you know, someday if this property is sold or somehow, we'll hope for the best. But in that, I'll let my fellow commissioners
That was a motion. I'd be glad to second it.
I'll make a motion and accept alternate number two.
Second.
Upon motion by Commissioner Airman, seconded by Vice Chairman O'Brien, again, fully supportive, you know, the mantra for our code enforcement team has been self mitigation and encouragement and making your property right. And I agree with that. I think that's what makes this a great place to live, because you motivate, you encourage, and the job gets done. In this case, it's clear that nothing is getting done. And again, on that rare occasion where you have to apply all harsh principles or perceived as harsh principles, it's the right thing to do. So, fully supportive and thank you. And thank you for clarification as well.
Mr. Chairman, just Dylan, the 2009 case, that was the Vista Golf Course property, is that correct?
So, there were actually two cases back then. There was Vista Properties, and then there was also, and the one I was referring to up here on the dais was actually the Susan McGowan case, which was the first of the two that came up that year.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
No further, and thank you. Next item is from Public Works, which is the Sector 7 Beach and Dune Restoration Project easement status and project options. Good morning, Rich.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rich Burka, Public Works Director. So, we're going to talk about Sector 7 today. One of two beach projects we have in the works. So, a little bit of background. You know, Sector 7 has been deemed critically eroded by FDEP. And since 2013, we've been losing about a foot and a half a year of the beach. There's 14 neighborhoods with 82 properties total that we would have to cross or put beach sand on for the project. The beach was re-nourished back in 2007 after Francis and Jean. So, the project area is smack in the middle of Sectors 6 and 7, how about that? Or 6 and 8. But my problem, the problem we have right now is access. If you look at the areas, the closest access is South Beach Park to the north, which is about 1.4 miles, and Round Island to the south. Within Sector 7, we have no public access at this time where we could put truck sand on the beach. So, little bit more history back, we came to the board, and we were looking for about 90% of the easements in order to make a feasible project. We have staff has utilized numerous methods, mailings, and beat the commission meetings. We've talked to beach insurers. Beach insurers has reached out to the property owners. I mean, it's just been a massive, we just talking to people. COVID put a little bit of damper on that, because we were visiting people. We would go, we would call people. We'd go out and visit them and say, hey, how can we make this work? We need to, we need to put beach on, sand on this beach. How can we make this work? So, we've been proactive for the last couple of years. Staff spends an enormous amount of time just trying to contact people and get the easements that are necessary to make this a viable project. So, as of June 23, we have 51 of the 82 easements. We've got eight that are under review right now by the attorney's office. We've got 14 that were denied, and we've got nine where they haven't responded at all. For the purposes of this presentation, we're going to consider them denials. We just haven't had any conversations with these people. So, a little bit for visual, you can see, this is the north end of Sector 7. So, at the very north end, you can see where I have a lot of either non-communication or just denied. And this is on the feeder beach, which feeds most of Sector 7. And we'll get into that in a minute. And then on the south end, same thing. I've got a bunch, I've got denials and pending denials on the south end. So, between the two, the middle, pretty much green. I can't get the sand there. So, then the feeder beach that we have on the north end is basically about 43% of the 295,000 cubic yards of sand that we're going to put on this beach goes on that feeder beach. And what the feeder beach does is with the, with the tides rolling south, it just takes that sand and distributes it along the Sector 7 beach as time goes on. So, here's a close-up of the north end where the feeder beach is. You can see where we just don't have easements in this area. Then there's, there's some other issues. We've got seawalls that go out all the way to the, basically the waterline that we'd have to get around. As long as we can wait for really low tide, we can get through. But other than that, these cause a little bit of an issue. This is what happens when we don't have easements. We've got to run in the water. This is not only dangerous, but it's bad for the equipment, it's bad for the environment. We just don't like doing this. But this is what's going to happen if we can't get easements, and we've got to stay off of the properties that haven't provided us with easements. You can see here, they tried to run on the dunes, on the side of the dune to get going. But when the tides are high, and when we were doing Sector 3, we had a lot of really high tides in the areas. So, we've got some project options. Staff spent a lot of time coming up with some options that we want to present this morning to you. One of the things we want you to keep in mind is, we have to do some pre-construction monitoring on the beaches before we start construction. That means we got to do some surveys and some, and look at, you know, where the hard bottoms are, things like that. That's going to cost us about $200,000. That's before we put a bucket of sand on the beach. So, just keep that in mind. And then the second thing is, is at this time, we have no viable access. We've reached out to private property owners off of public roadways, trying to discuss with them. Being able to get access across a vacant lot, we have not had success. The one lot that we had last year has been sold, and that property owner has not talked to us. We haven't been able to get a hold of them. And we've tried numerous times. So, option one, so we can seek, continue to seek the remaining easements that we need, perform the pre-construction monitoring in accordance with the permit, prepare the bid docs, and go ahead and advertise in July, and then open in September. And then prior to award, we come back to the board and reassess the amount of easements we had. And as I discussed earlier, it's about $200,000 to do the pre-construction monitoring. Option two, continue to try to get easements, of course, perform the pre-construction monitoring, modify the template for the beach sand, and just put the sand on the green beaches, on the green easements that we've seen. What this will do is reduce the project by about 35% in material, but we don't think it's going to reduce the cost, because we still got to get around with the sand on the beaches. This could give us, we've analyzed this, but it could give us some constructability issues because of the easements that are missing. It could reach to, could give us some problems with just the way the easements go, the way the berm is shaped. We may not really get a good protecting berm along the beach. And again, it will significantly, significantly reduce the storm protection along the beach. So, just to give you a little, this is the feeder beach area. Now, we could, we looked into, we could construct to the seaward, or the ocean side of the red line. Okay? So, that would take, do two things. Number one, we'd be filling in, running in the water for some of it. But what we would do is have a beach that's higher than everything to the landward side of the red line. This could cause problems. We know it'll cause problems along this entire frontage. But we did look at it. We talked to our consultants about it. We just don't We just don't see that this is going to be, this would be a viable option, but we did look at it, and we looked at it hard. We're just afraid this is going to hold water. This is going to cause problems. So, then we have option three. Option three is for this, for the upcoming 21, 22 fiscal year, determine the project not to be constructible, which would mean we wouldn't pursue the pre-construction monitoring. We would talk to FEMA and DEP and everybody that we've gotten grants from and see if we can extend them for another year. Don't know how that'll go. We've extended them once already, but, you know, we may have some luck with extending the funding for another year. Of course, all this time, we're going to continue to be trying to get these easements from those people. You know, COVID's let up, and state's open for business. We're going to start, we can start talking to people, you know, sit down with them, talk to them personally, just see if we can change their minds. And then we can pursue construction in fiscal year 22, 23. The good thing is we have a 15-year permit. So, if we can get the easement issues ironed out, our permit is valid. We can move forward. Of course, the sand will change a little bit, but we'll be all right. And then we have option four. Option four is basically just pull the plug on the project. Just decide it's not constructible based on the lack of response from the shareholders and for easements, and return all the, what funding we do have to DEP and FEMA. And then we would end up being the ones solely responsible for this, funding the project in the future if we did this option. So, after careful and thorough consideration, we decided, we came up with, we think option three is the best bet for us. Let's not construct it this year. Let's determine it's not constructible, it's constructible for 20, 21, 22. Let's not do the pre-construction monitoring. We'll get in contact with FEMA and DEP. Kristen's in the budget. She's been a big help with FEMA. I mean, she's just awesome with the FEMA work. I can't thank her enough for getting into this and helping us out and just, basically, she's taken the lead. She's been phenomenal on this. And I think with her help, we can, we can convince FEMA this is a good thing for the community. And then we'll look at constructing in 22, 23. Staff also requests that the board authorized staff to start looking for possibly purchasing a piece or a access to Sector 7 within the Sector 7 area. This does two things. Number one, it guarantees us access to Sector 7 if we can find it. Number two, it opens up funding possibilities in the future because now we have public access that we can use for getting state, additional state money to renourish the beaches. So, with that, any questions?
Well, you know, thank you, Rich. It's a very difficult balance, as many of us who have served on the beach and shores and having worked closely with your team as far as evaluation and trying to encourage folks to yield and provide us access for their beach. I just, sometimes it just doesn't make sense. Joe, I know you, you serve now on the beach and shores. Peter, you did it for many years. I did as well, Susan. And I, I just don't understand the logic in preventing us from going forward when we have the funding, the resources. And I can only think that if we delay this another year or so, we get a couple of good storms, that every beach area or beach ownership or access to ownership will be nothing more than a sea wall in Commissioner Moss's district. And it would just be, just a cement line. It's just going to happen. We need to renourish the beaches. Very frustrating.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the Beach and Shore Committee has looked at this thing backwards and forwards. They've done a really good job with it. They're really very, very committed to what their, what their job is there, and they have just, the easement thing just is making, making them all crazy of how to attain the easements. They've come up with some ideas that for Eric and staff to look at. I mean, it's everything from using drone footage of showing a nice beach and a good beach to, to, you know, knocking door to door, to sending out more letters. And I think those are all viable options, and we need to, and I think we're open for suggestions too on how to, how to get these easements because that seems to be the biggest problem. So, they also went with option three after discussing it, and I think that's really our best option with that. But I can tell you though, this is, this is a problem that I didn't figure that, that we would have. I mean, I just really have a hard time saying, why won't you let, why won't you put sand on your beach? I don't think a thousand, you know, sunbathers and volleyball players are going to march on your beach just because, just because we wanted a, you know, perpetual agreement to, to allow access to put sand on it. I don't remember the access part, though, being discussed at the last Beach and Shores meeting. So, I don't remember that being discussed, but I think that's a good idea too, that we may have to look for, like you said, look for access somehow to do that. I think it does open up some additional maybe funding sources. Like I said, I do like that. But yeah, the Beach and Shore guys have just, and girls have just really worked real hard on this, and they're, they're, they're just like staff. They're at a point of, you know, what do we do next? What do we, honestly, what do we do next? But that being said, though, you know, I'd like to make a motion, go ahead and set staff recommendation for option three.
I'd be happy to second that. Well, not happy to second it, but willing to. I just, it defies all logic that there would be a group of individuals that are churning the waters and ensuring that people say no. That's the issue in Sector 7. I know we had it in Sector 3 a bit, and the Beach and Shores team and many, many people. I went out to speak with people, and they understood. They understood that this is their value, their, their property, their, it's their beach. And we're getting the sand to them so they have a continued nice environment, paying a whole lot of property tax to ensure that they have that beachfront. And it's going to be gone if it's not taken care of. So, I guess that's the best option at this point.
We just finished Sector 5, and you should see some of the pictures.
Beautiful.
See some of the pictures that the staff's taken up there. It's absolutely amazing what they did and the, you know, plant, the vegetation, how it is and everything else. And I just really am just shaking my head as to why we can't get more easements down south.
You know, I want to go back to early on when Peter will remember how much criticism we took on spending so much money on the beaches and investing, and it was almost a unanimous consent that this was the best thing to do. We have beautiful beaches now, but it was at the cost of tens of millions of dollars. And we did get some reimbursement, and we did have to look at different channels for funding, but the job got done, and people have beautiful beaches. And we got over that frustration, and now look at this. Enough said. Does anybody have further comments? Yes.
I agree with option three. Unfortunately, you know, we don't have everyone on board. I would appreciate a list of those people who are not on board yet, and I'll contact some of them. I'm aware of some of the complaints. I got some when I first started this job, and I wasn't entirely familiar with, with some of this. And some of the homeowners felt that sand being pushed through their area blocked off some of their own private access to the beach. So, I want to learn more about that, you know, what the objections are. I mean, I agree with you. It's a shame to let this, have this funding and not be able to use it to protect the beaches. So...
Unfortunately, I think it's going to require you to stay in that one little section and camp out.
Camp out?
Stay in that district and just work them hard.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, I said, we did accomplish it over, right over the Robaso Causeway and sections to the right. It did take some time too. It was, it was a lot of work, and a lot of, lot of good folks from Beach and Shores got out there too. And Rich had to be creative as well to get the job done, but move forward. But this one, I think, is a bear.
Yeah.
I think you have some parties that have gotten underneath the property owners and just said, just say no. And I don't know what it's going to take to overturn that, but you're going to spend a lot of time.
Yeah, maybe Jason will give me a tent.
If you, if, well, we have, we might have some...
We'll be happy to give Commissioner Moss a list of the names. I do want to point out, we also do have a map on the county's website. GIS has done a great job with this, and it's interactive, and you can actually click on the individual ones, and it'll show that they've got the green and the red and the yellow with the color coded, and you can click on them, and it's all integrated with the property appraiser site so you can see the owners. But we'll, we'll, we'll get the names.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we do have... Just Dylan, the eight easements that are under review, I assume those are all positives or not?
Yeah, what happens is they come to us, and we just double-check things like the proper people signed, they had the proper notary, I mean, just all those technical...
They are positive.
Yeah, if it's under review, they signed it and sent it to us, and that would therefore be turned into a positive.
Right, so, you know, I agree, option three is our best choice at this point, but I feel bad for the total of 59 of the property owners that have given us permission, that they won't be getting the storm, storm protection that they've agreed to allow us to put there. It's kind of interesting, Rich, the majority of the negatives are at the north end and south end, closest to the public beach access areas. And I don't know if those folks are afraid of the, you know, beach volleyball creep that, you know, if, hey, if we're right next to the, the public access, those people are going to start spilling over onto our property. So, just, you know, kind of throwing some spaghetti up on the wall. We already have, you know, our turtle folks out there, you know, during the summer nesting season, going up and down the beach. I just wonder if we can get these property owners to be more comfortable, and maybe we even have to hire a beach patrol position that would monitor those properties during the summer or whenever, and then we could tell those property owners, hey, listen, we're going to have somebody checking the beach, you know, every day, and if there's people creeping up onto your property, they have the authority to move them off. And I don't know, you know, that might be a 50 to $75,000 cost or something, but for a seven, eight million dollar beach project, that may, might just be part of the cost of doing it. And that might be a way of getting those people comfortable to allow us to put the sand there if we can say, hey, we're going to, we're going to make sure that beach creep doesn't happen on your, your property, and that, that might get them over the hump. But that, like I said, that's throwing spaghetti on the wall, but...
Isn't the north and south boundary of Sector 7 over a mile away from any?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a far, I'm just saying, that's a far...
Yeah, I realize that, yeah.
...after about 25 feet, and that's about where I'm going to end.
I, I know, yep.
And I believe it would have to be a law enforcement officer.
So, we knew you were going to throw spaghetti against the wall.
Uh-huh.
I had that feeling that you were going to throw spaghetti against the wall. So, we went ahead and we looked at this, and actually, it came up on Beach and Shores.
Okay.
So, here's a list of the 23 project, or the 23 parcels that we have right now that are either denied or the pending ones. So, we got one against the beach renourishment project. There's always one. We've got five in the denied area that didn't give a reason. We had six of them that had an issue with the perpetuity in the easement, and two of them with the customary use. And then the ones that are pending, you know, we've had five of them that didn't respond, and two of them said, yeah, we got enough sand. They got to live on the feeder beach here. So, we looked into this, and most of them, you can see, we got basically eight that had either a problem with perpetuity or the customary use. And then, you know, so we did look into this. Not once did it, you know, you could infer because of the perpetuity, they were worried about the volleyball creep. But with the, with the public access, the closest public access being so far away, we just think they just don't like people walking in front of their house.
Yeah.
You know, so we did look at this. Like I say, it came up on Beach and Shores, and we figured it would come up, somebody was going to throw something against the wall.
Just Commissioner Adams mentioned she would go 25 feet. I know that my Susan, when we go to South Beach, she, we walk all the way down to where the, the cove is, where it makes that kind of curve, which is probably, you know, maybe a mile, mile and a half down the beach.
More power to her.
Yeah, but...
She may be trying to run away, but...
And we're not the only one. I mean, other people are doing the same thing, but, you know, really, you're walking kind of right there along the shell line or the rack line, you know? There's no need to go further up, or maybe if you see a sea turtle nest, you might walk up to where the nest is and take a look. But most of the people I've seen that will walk that far down, you know, and cross a lot of different property lines, they're right there kind of on the water's edge. They're not up in the vegetation and stuff, so... Anyway, okay, well, I appreciate you all looking into this, and that's good, good information to have there, so, thank you.
I have an idea, Commissioner O'Brien. If this project doesn't move forward, we could take all that sand, and we could put it on our dirt roads because all those people would be happy to have the county out and...
That's an awesome idea.
It could be a win-win. Rich is having a heart attack right now.
And you know, a lot of that, all that sand is old beach sand anyway from a million years ago, so we're just putting it, and think how many happy constituents we would have, Rich.
Yeah, but then we have a debate about if it's 41 CMs or 44 CMs, as you recall.
Oh, my God.
I'll stop, I'll stop making suggestions now, Rich, but I'm just saying...
It's a, it's a good suggestion. I can build, with all that sand, I can build them up high enough so that, and the water will perk through. The problem is nobody's going to be able to drive in it.
Right, well, there's...
And when it's dry, we're done.
Rich?
Can I bring an umbrella and cooler and pop it down?
Before we call the question, I just, for the betterment of the public at large, could you explain why we can't do a temporary easement on it for a year or less, do the project, and then release it back?
Oh, I'm going to defer to the county attorney.
I thought you, I thought you were ready for any kind of pasta.
Oh, no.
Just the spaghetti. Okay.
Just the spaghetti on the wall.
I mean, the real issue there is, is the public benefit aspect, and you've seen this in the applications that need, you know, and the funding we get from DEP and our, our state and federal partners, is basically you have a temporary permit in which we do the project, and then after that, it goes away. I mean, a temporary easement, I'm sorry, not a permit, but temporary easement, and it goes away. And then there's a question as to whether, you know, what the public benefit of that project was once, once that beach, that beach easement is gone. And that's really the, the key reason behind making sure that we get that public use and public benefit solidified on all of those properties that are receiving significant benefit from this project.
So, you're suggesting that, Council, that it could jeopardize the funding stream as it did when we got some FEMA money for some pumping stations down in Rock Ridge, and that could also be another reason?
Yeah, some of the stuff we've seen, both from the state and federal partners, is obviously a public benefit, not just simply a beach renourishment project that benefits private properties, and thus is the, the real need for these sort of long-term easements that allow the public traditional use of the beach.
So, we have to ensure that we maintain that it's a continuous public benefit?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Dylan, could, could you do, instead of a perpetuity for some of these people to have an issue with that, could you do like a, I don't know if it'd make any difference, could you do like a 10-year or 20-year thing, and then...
I think the issue is that we certainly could have a discussion of how long that is. The issue for the board from a policy... The, the issue for the board from a policy perspective then is, you've had a number of people in Sector 3 and Sector 5 who've signed these sort of, these easements in perpetuity, and the question is, does it make, from a policy standpoint, sense for the folks in Sector 7 to have kind of a different easement? And I defer to the board on, on whether that's a route that this board wishes to choose.
I don't, I don't, I agree with you, Counselor. I don't believe it's fair.
I agree, but I'm, I'm just shooting, I'm really, I'm telling Commissioner O'Brien, so I'm throwing spaghetti on the wall. We're reaching for anything here that we can, that I can think of. Can you go back to the slide that, with the reasons for, real quick? Against beach re-nourishment, we're probably not going to get that person, but maybe if we show them some stuff, you could. No reasons are given undecided should probably be the ones we should, we should go after because maybe they, they just don't understand it. The perpetuity thing is why I was asking, and I agree, it's not fair for everybody else, but I was just, I was just reaching for straws on that one. And what would be the issue with customary use? What was, did you all get any direction on that? And I'm assuming customary use means what a beach is normally customary used for?
Yeah, so what we've added in our beach easements is language regarding customary use. This was partially in response to trying to deal with the recent Florida statutory provisions concerning the customary use process and declaration process. Basically, it just says that the traditional uses of the beach will be maintained for the public, so it's not a matter of expanding those uses, it's for those very traditional recreational, walk the beach, beach comb, you know, sit on the beach, fish, you know, those types of things.
No reason given undecided would be the first, first ones I would go after, and then maybe against beach re-nourishment, that one, and then just, I guess, we'll just have Sean Rich to go talk to the people about perpetuity.
He's the biggest guy we got.
You don't want me talking. Wrong guy.
Again, I just don't really understand it. I don't, why you wouldn't want a better beach.
We, we don't understand it either, Commissioner. I mean, staff has been awesome on this, you know, they, they've stopped, even before COVID, we went and saw them, we talked to them. You know, it's just, some of them just have decided they don't, and, and a lot of them have others' parties involved, and they're being advised not to sign them. And that's kind of the crux of it. It's, it's, hey, the people are like, "Yeah, you know, maybe, but my attorney has said, yeah, it's not a good idea, and I don't sign it." And that's just kind of what we're running into. So not only can we talk to the property owners who have the final decision, but there are other people bending their ears on this thing. And I, and I've got to say, you know, in Sector 3 and 7, we've got these easements, and now we're good, we can, you know, we'll be able to do this and not have to go through this again in five, seven, 10 year, whenever we put sand on the beach again. We've got the easements. Now we can roll right in to putting sand on the beach and continue to re-nourish our beaches without having to go what we're going through right now. So the way the, the easements are written is great from everybody's standpoint, and to, we'll, we'll look at it, we're going to contact some of these people again and see if we can't change their minds. It's the only thing we can do to make this a viable project.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Palm motion by Commissioner Arum, and seconded by myself for option number three. All in favor? Is there anybody attending that wishes to speak? There's always, there's one.
Morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, Justice Powell and I'm President of Blackswan Consulting. The county has a policy, Policy Number 1430, which refers to condemnation. It doesn't really refer to this aspect of it, but there's room for an addendum to it. Let me ask you this, is there any way we can do a temporary condemnation policy so we can get the access we need, which is a legal aspect, and then it says we have to put it back the way it was when we're done using the access? So a temporary condemnation policy possibly would get rid of all this negotiating with people that don't have any reason to do it?
Question?
Well, I think that would open up the access to get the equipment onto the beach, but we still need the other easements to put sand on the property. So that would, that would give us a way to get on the beach, but we still don't have permission to put sand on those other properties. So then we'd have a very incomplete project and not get the storm protection we're looking for.
Counselor?
Well, I, I think it's, and again, it goes to the nature of two different issues. One, the easements, you've got people opposed to signing these easements. So thus, if they don't want it to be in perpetuity, or they don't want the customary use to be allowed, then if we just simply get a temporary construction easement to access the other properties, the question then is, did we kind of reward bad behavior for those folks? Because then we're going to be paying them money to do, you know, through the eminent domain process, and, and again, it's a policy call for the board. I just don't know if that's, policy-wise, the right direction to go.
Just, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, next item is the county attorney matters, which is a resolution of necessity for five parcels of right-of-way located along 66th Avenue between 69th and 85th Streets, Vera Beach, Florida, 32967, Parcel 127, the Lipford and tenant Tongue, Parcel 128, Williams, Parcel 130, Sexton, Parcel 132, Van Antwerp, and Parcel 151, Barker, Strickland.
Morning, Commissioners. Bill Dubrow on behalf of the County Attorney's Office. Today, we have the second step in the eminent domain process concerning these properties, all in the Phase 2 area from 69th Street up to 85th Street on 66th Avenue. First phase was giving, or the first step was giving everybody notice by certified mail of the property that we would need to acquire from them. This is the second step as far as that we need to take with the resolution of necessity. It does not require a public hearing. It just gives staff and outside counsel the ability to file the lawsuit and prosecute the lawsuit in through its conclusion. In approving the resolution of necessity, the board has to take into consideration the scale report, the acronym SCALE that was done for the 66th Avenue corridor. That means that you have to identify the safety of the project, the cost of the project, alternative alignments, long-term effects, and also the environmental effects. That is the scale report that was done and was up for consideration and review with the County Commission Office. If we take a look at the parcels, the first one is the Lipford parcel. If you could bring that up, please. You can see the Lipford parcel. It's a little better than 12 acres. We need 1.07 acres from the Lipford property. Involved in that take will be some fencing and also paddocks that are there for the Empire Equestrian business. Mr. Lipford is currently leasing out this property to Ms. Tongue, who runs Empire Equine out of this area. As you may know, that tenants are also involved in the eminent domain process. They are entitled to make a claim. If there's a business involved, they are also able to make a business claim as well. The next parcel that we have is the Williams parcel. We need just a small take from the Williams. You can see there that the two-acre parcel is only going to, we only need 0.4 acres from it, very small area. There are no improvements involved in this take. And I, I should say, all these properties are zoned agricultural, one unit per five acres. The next parcel is the Sexton parcel that's up toward the top of the screen. It's an 18-acre parcel. We need .40 acres, or tenths of an acre. And here's a good example of, of the scale process in, in action. If you take a look at the top of 81st and 66th, that square there is a power station, a transfer station. Hitting something like that and staying with the current alignment that we had had for the property, or for the southern part of 66th Avenue, if we'd have FPL start to move that, we'd be into the millions of dollars. There'd be environmental concerns. There'd be long-term concerns as well, and it would be much easier and much safer just to bend the road to the east as we're doing in this area, so we need a triangular piece of property from the Sextons that will taper off until it hits there. The other one across the street from it is the Van Antwerps. The Van Antwerps have a four-acre parcel property, a little better than that. We need a .99 acres from them. They also have a tenant that would be the citrus folks that are there, that's owned by the Benax. It's interesting that the Benax and the Van Antwerps are related, and finding all these different things out as far as 66th Avenue North is concerned. They had the corn maze on part of the property that would need. We don't know if they were, if the citrus, countryside citrus people are going to seek a damages claim, but they are entitled to it as tenants. And last but not least, we have the Strickland Barker property that is there toward the south. We need a small .1, just a tenth of an acre from that. Like I said, this does not require a public hearing. It just gives staff permission to go ahead and file the suit and prosecute the matters to their conclusion. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
I want to sit back and watch the magic happen.
No, this, this isn't the money part yet, so it's just the, you know, given, like Bill said, give staff the authority to move forward. The, the money issue will come down the road, so, but I'll be glad to go ahead and move staff recommendation that we approve the resolution of necessity and authorize staff to proceed with the right-of-way acquisition.
And that's palm motion by Vice Chairman O'Brien, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? Step one. Step two will be a little noisier.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just going to watch.
Yeah, it will be noisier.
I don't know if there's any members of the public that.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
In terms of the amount of land that's required, you know, the size of the parcels, how was that determined? I noticed that it varies quite a bit.
It, it does, and it, it's determining as far as here, the road, instead of going straight to the north, is angling to the east to avoid that substation. And when they measure it out, what our plans are, and Rich can help me out on this, we are going ultimately to a six-lane roadway. We're taking enough right-of-way now to go in the future to add additional lanes in both directions, still with a median, curbed to keep the traffic, or to keep the speeds up so the traffic keeps moving, and that's what determines it. It's simply the width of the road and where it's going through.
So it's the substation that accounts for the differences and the, and the sizes of the parcels?
We're avoiding the substation in this.
Avoiding it, yes.
So we're, we're skewing the road over to the east in this way, which means that we're taking less right-of-way from the property owners on the west side of 66th and more right-of-way from the property owners on the east side of 66th.
Have, have they been approached at all? Because some of it, some of it sounds like, you know, sizable portions.
They, they've all been notified, yes.
And are.
We've been in discussions with them as far as trying to acquire the property, just like the Lipford property that's coming up after this. We've been speaking with Van Antwerps as well, and the other ones have all been contacted. Some are represented by, by counsel, some are not. But yes, we, we've been negotiating with them all along.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Is there anybody from the public in attendance? Anybody on the internet?
I mean, I have a simple question as a layperson and a property owner is.
Name.
How would the, how do the property owners feel about? Sorry?
Your name and.
I'm sorry. Lamar Noder Jacamo, I live in Vera Beach.
Okay.
And I just wonder how the property owners feel about their property being taken by eminent domain laws? So I guess if it was my property, I'd try to do everything I could to fight it. So what recourse do the property owners have? Do they have to hire an expensive attorney? They have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars? What recourse do they have as property owners? That's my question.
It, this is the first step in the procedure. The procedure, the law states very clearly, when there are challenges, we pay the freight. They don't pay the freight. So that, that begins the process. In some of these cases, as this is initiated, sometimes people decide, well, there's a fair, a fair offer, and we'll go forward. There are 11th-hour decisions that get made in households and in property owners' arenas. However, we can't count on that, so. Counselor?
Just, just to fill that out, no, they don't have to hire an attorney. We pay the attorney's fees for the person, much like in a personal injury case, well, I shouldn't even say that, not even like in a personal injury case where the attorney takes a percentage of the money that goes to the injured person. In eminent domain, the attorney's fee is on top of what goes to the person. As far as if someone would like to fight it as much as they could, they are certainly entitled to do that. Their attorney would represent them in court. Ultimately, it would be a need, if the county can show that there is a need for taking that property, looking at the scale report and those five factors, the property would be given, it would be given to the county or purchased by the county for an offer that was made for that property. Engineers, planners, construction people, all those experts would also be paid for by the county, not needed to be hired upfront by the landowner. So it's a very expensive process for the government to go through. That's why we take great pains in making sure that the alignment is the least offensive to everyone. In the eminent domain process, some people are the fighters, other people look at it as, well, I'm not going to be able to contest it, it's a roadway that needs to be built, I don't like to sell, but I'm going to sell it at above-market price, so that eases the sting a little bit. I hope that answered your question. You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Getting back to the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting. If, just again, I wanted to address your question. It's very clear, we do stand for property rights. However, if this does not go forward and is, is, from this point, to start the course of action, there will be no action, there will be no road. So we have to go forward in this manner, and as our experience over the years with the other portions of Phase 1 and 2, we have had some negotiations at the 11th hour. There has been many discussions, there has been many decisions, there have been some wins and some failures, but we need to go forward to get, put this on the canvas to get the roadway moving forward. But we don't know the full outcome at this point, and there will be more discussion. Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Counsel, anything else?
Not in, not in the resolution of necessity, no, sir.
Thank you. Next item is the acquisition of right-of-way for the Frederick L. Lippford and Norma C. Lippford Trust for Phase 2 of 66th Avenue Improvements, 7905 66th Avenue, Parcel 127.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the Lippford parcel is on the west side of 66th Avenue, it is zoned agricultural, one unit per five acres. Mr. Lippford is the owner, and as I said previously, that Empire Equine has a leasehold on this property where they have their boarding facility, they are also entitled, entitled to that claim, that is why they were included in the resolution of necessity, even though we've been doing settlement negotiations with them. We want to make sure that Empire Equine's claim is preserved, even if Mr. Lippford settles with us as we're asking today. The property, like I said, is improved, in the area of take is some fencing and also part of a paddock. There's a small house on the property, also a barn and a riding ring, with the property being divided up into paddocks as well. It's a 12.25-acre parcel, we need to take 1.07 acres as right-of-way, and there's fence line in the right-of-way, and in this case, we made an exception for Mr. Lippford with the agreement of Mr. Spirica, that during the construction process, the county would go through and replace or relocate the fence, depending on its condition and depending on the costs, to the new right-of-way line, so Mr. Lippford does not have to worry about that or does not have to contract that. The agreed purchase price was $42,500 per acre, and when that's worked out as far as a cost, it would be a total cost of $45,475. There are no expert witness fees, nor any attorney's fees in this matter, the, the benefit of this settlement is going 100% to Mr. Lippford. So staff's recommendation is to go ahead and approve the purchase price of the property at $45,475. Be happy to answer any questions.
This, I, I, this is, in my mind, hopefully, the way all these could go, and I, I assume Lippford's here, is it?
Mr. Lippford?
No.
No, okay. I, I, I think it's great, I appreciate them coming forward and working with the county to come up, which I think is, in this case, a pretty reasonable price for the, the, the land, and I'm all for moving their fence, I think we can do that. So I, I think this is a good example of where I would like to see all these go down in the future, so I'll be glad to go ahead and move staff recommendation to approve the agreement for the Lippford, Lippford property.
And, thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, because I...
These, these make me happy, I'm good.
That's why I looked towards you first. I wanted to...
I wish they all could be like this.
One of those good-feel winds under your belt...
By weakness.
Before we go forward with the rest.
Yeah, these are good, thank you, Bill, and Rich, and whoever worked on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You were impressed with that, weren't you?
It's very helpful, as far as when you go to, when you go to the folks and say, this is exactly what the board wants, and this is what they, you know, is it above purchase price, above fair market value? Yes, it is, but, I mean, the benefit is going to the, to the landowner, so we're, we're very pleased to bring this one forward.
I, I agree with Commissioner O'Brien, this is how, this is how the process should work, I mean, that's more than a fair offer, and I think that's great. The question is, Bill, though, Mrs. Ms. Tongue, through her attorney, is, will compile documents reviewed by the county to order assess her damage claim, if she's entitled to that?
Yes, the lease, her tax returns, all those kind of things, and in talking with her attorney, she has said that she'd like to see if we could work something out without having a business damages expert, an engineer, and land planning person in like that, so hopefully, we'll be able to wrap up that whole parcel in the near future.
Is there, is there a limit on that? I mean, is there like, it's, it's got to be a reasonable request, or?
I mean, yes, and it has to be supported by the documentation that they provide to us, or to us. And if they don't provide the documentation, they, they aren't entitled to a claim. Some people don't want to share tax information with us, but that's, according to statute, that's what has to be done.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, Commissioner Moss, anything further? Anybody from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Counselor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And thank those property owners as well, and it's always nice to end the meeting on a positive note, and I think that was the most positive it could have been, unless you have something more positive.
I do have something more positive. I just want to congratulate Commissioner Ehrman and Commissioner Moss...
Yes.
...on graduating from the Florida Association of Counties Certified Commissioner Program.
All right.
Congratulations, all.
That was my close, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All I can say is that my dad told me that education, too much education can be a dangerous thing. That being said, y'all might be in trouble.
I'll keep that, I'll keep that in mind, thank you.
Does that mean that you're eager to go to the ACC?
I'm going to do that, absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
We want to congratulate Commissioner Adams, though, on her choices, taking Commissioner O'Brien's place on the Board of Directors of Florida State Schools and Counties.
That was the close, I was...
Thank, thank you.
Yes.
Big shoes to follow, Commissioner O'Brien, shoes.
I have all the confidence in you, Commissioner Adams.
Your years of service, and we look forward to additional great benefit for the greater good of the community and to the other commissions in the state as well.
Thank you.
So thank you. With that, guaranteed, get more positive, lest we spoke about Rich. Meeting adjourned.[1792.92]